Get it Bruce.
6:30 in Reed Field Main. Say the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Hello?
Hello, sorry I missed that.
You're transcendent turquoise today.
Yes, look at that. Back from, back from New Mexico.
Back from New Mexico. House or sweat lodge retreat. Yeah, that's, I mean she looks like a sweat.
Okay guys.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Use that gavel for these guys.
Yeah, we're gonna have to separate them like they do in school.
That's happened to me before.
All right, minutes of the meeting August 12th, 2019.
I move to accept the minutes from our last meeting.
I'll second.
Any discussion? No? All those in favor?
I need one second.
Uh huh.
Oh, I was just running down over here. So it's uh...
I'm handicapped for about 10 seconds.
Yeah, I like to have the agenda in front of me. That way I don't have to keep scrolling back.
So it's capital S, three exclamation point, then...
No, it still says it's incorrect.
Is it capital?
Do you want mine Catherine?
Yes.
Numeral three, exclamation point.
Maybe my cap's locks wrong.
Oh, where did you just do that? New selling machine. Come on baby.
Technology, right? There you go.
Okay, warrants seven through 10. Catherine?
Oh, I'm almost there.
You can borrow my paper copy if you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
Now I'm frozen up too.
You wanna trade that, transfer stat this way or is it? I'll get that working for you.
It's been an interesting day.
Yes.
I've had problems. I'm on a, a different word.
Which warrant do you want me on?
Google.
Uh, start with seven, let's go through to eight.
Okay. I think we have other technical difficulties here.
I don't want what mail, I want, I want...
Am I okay to go you guys?
Yeah, whenever you're ready.
Okay.
Yes ma'am, sorry.
So warrant seven and eight were approved by at least three of us. Warrant seven was in the amount of $57,767.63. It was a regular warrant. It included two state fees which were signed by just me. Notable items in there were some Heritage Days payments. We had $3,500 to Central Main Pyrotechnics for the fireworks. We paid $14,000, thank you, $700 to Dirigo Architectural for design work at the library and fire department and possibly also here at the town office. And we had $12,007.08 in legal fees to Priti Flaherty. And other than that, there wasn't anything... Oh, yes, there was. We paid two different payments for the new attendance shed at the transfer station. It came to approximately $3,100.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
And which warrant are we discussing right now?
Seven and eight.
Seven and eight, okay great, yeah, I had a question about that.
The total, the total amount is with payroll which was $14,912.29. So the total is $72,679.92 which I would make a motion to approve.
Second that.
All those in favor? Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, now nine and 10?
Yes, okay. Warrants nine and 10 happened last week. There is a school payment in there, so that is a very large payment because the school has a payment of $309,199.51. We also did most of our payments for our Trio software to Harris Computers for $15,300.
That's what that was, okay. Thank you.
Yep. We had our requests come in from the 30 Mile River watershed for what we had voted in at town meeting, $2,500. We made a payment to the town of Fayette which I believe was for our broadband group...
The grant, matching funds essentially.
Matching funds. That was Reed Field share. And we made a bond payment of $72,000. And those were the significant items, so that came to $422,655.39 along with state fees and payroll. The total amount was $440,134.16 which I shall make a motion to approve.
I second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Excellent. Eric, you saved me, thank you.
Any select board communication?
Yes, from today, it is 333 days until August 7th, 2020, which is the first day of Heritage Days 2020. I know that because I asked Siri and she told me. We are, we are trying to make sure, one of the things that we want to do is each, every time we want to talk about it, make sure people know when it is and talk about things that people may want. So we're certainly excited about coming up with ideas. We had our last meeting and we discussed a lot of interesting things. We really got a lot of positive feedback. We really got a lot of suggestions about things that we may want to try for next year just to enrich the experience. And what's great about it is it is a chance for the town to come out and celebrate a day, celebrate at the beach, the fairgrounds, the trails downtown with the meeting house. It's just, it's really, it's a great just opening of the town. So next year we'll do better. We'll have even more offerings and enriching things for everyone. So stay tuned, 333 days.
And that's August 7th, 2020?
August 7th, 2020 is a Friday. That is gonna be, we're gonna try to do our Friday, Saturday, Sunday again next year.
All right.
Yeah, we'll see what happens.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, um, trunk and treat this year is gonna be Halloween night and it's gonna be in the meeting house parking lot. I need trunks, so if anybody's interested in participating, please let me know. And last year we had over 250 kits come through.
What date is it again?
It's Halloween, October 31st.
And where are we holding this? Was it at the meeting house last year?
Union Meeting House last year and that's where it is this year. They're gonna do their pumpkin walk at the same time.
And that goes from the library up to the meeting house?
Yep.
Just for people who don't know.
And tomorrow evening, there's a community heart and soul meeting. I just wanted to get out there because there was, it wasn't, I didn't know about it till I got the email. So it's September 10th, 5:45 light refreshments. It starts at 6:00 PM upstairs in the town office. And it's, "Activity sinking collective wisdom of all residents including those whose voices are often missing. Community heart and soul brings people together to build stronger, healthier, and more economically vibrant towns."
They have a really awesome website if anyone wants to go on and look. It's put on by the Orton Family Foundation and there have been quite a few towns in Maine that have had great success working with them, bringing people together and, and just it's been really heartening to read and hear some of the stories.
How do they operate in terms of funding? This isn't something that people do out of the goodness of their heart in terms of an operation, from an operation perspective?
I think, well that's what you'll find out if you come tomorrow night, but they, the Orton Foundation leads you to get the framework.
You have to buy in.
And then it becomes, yes, and then it becomes a community thing and then the community can decide how they're going to approach it and how they're going to fund it if there is funding needed. If it's gonna be all volunteer or if it's a mix of town employees and volunteers.
And how, how widespread is it in Maine?
I don't have a number.
Okay.
Sorry.
Good questions for tomorrow evening. The experience I've had is with the city of Gardner which is quite a bit larger than we are, but they had a need to work on their identity and I think it was a very successful program for them. I saw some wonderful leaders developed and, you know, encouraged and brought forward through that process in that, in that city. So I think it can be successful and I think it's something that'd be great for us to look at. It's not for every community, just like any community development or outreach program isn't for everybody or every community, but, you know, one of the things that I've seen over the last four years is that we have different identities in Reed Field. Different groups, different subgroups, and not everybody participates in the same way. And the one thing I love about this program or anything like it is that they work to bring out people in ways that they normally wouldn't engage. An art installation someplace in town, a message board at the local store. Just outreach that is more than just us saying, "Hey, we're having a meeting folks, come, come, come to us." It's a very different approach and I like that because it gets to different people in different ways and you get more, better information.
Bottom of that top down.
Yeah, yeah, but it really is a responsive program. It's what the community wants it to be. And one of the other things, I was gonna talk about this in my report a little bit, but I really like about it is that it's not a town of Reed Field proper T, proper R event. It's a community event that we're a participant in, but we're not the leader. And so that, I like that about it. But anyway, yeah, there's my spiel.
I think David Trinell has taken up the lead to get it started for the initial meeting and I think his approach at first was to not bring in all of the elected officials because we always do that. And this is to bring in the townspeople and have them come out and he invited a pretty varied group of, I don't know, 20 or more people to come and, and have a conversation. And then it went out to the general public just recently, so.
So if we come sit in the back row and listen?
Great. It's not meant that we would drive this as the elected officials.
Yeah, it's a community.
It's really a community thing. So if the community at large is interested, they'll, they'll make it happen. And we'll be there to do whatever is needed. That's what I think.
Do you want to do your staff report and then we'll do Shana Bellows?
Sure, I will try to move through it fairly quickly. I'll do, I have two treasurer's reports, I'll just do August.
Okay.
Because I hadn't had a chance to report on July prior. But I'll start with my town manager's report and talk about maintenance and infrastructure. We have multiple capital projects in the works. Bids for three were due Friday. We received three for the town office accessibility and parking improvements, two for the library roof repairs, and one for the salt sand shed. We're gonna talk about all of those later. We have met with the planning board for the initial review of the fire station expansion project. That went well. They had some good questions and a real focus on the long-term viability of the shared septic system. So I thought that was very good of them to pick up on that and to focus on it. Paving of South Road is happening in September. It'll be the week of the 16th, so expect delays on South Road. We will be communicating actively with everybody we can in various ways to let people know that we're gonna have some delays. It's where the middle school is, not the middle school, the elementary school. They already paved the other road. And so we're gonna have some impacts, I just want to make sure if people...
The big white barn is there. It just went up on the Facebook page. I just put it on there because I just saw it. So, you know, to pass it around. And I also mentioned Eric, the apron of Loose Road and I kind of explained what that was as well in the post.
Yes.
Speed of light.
The speed of light, you are a fast man Dennis.
Your fingers.
So thank you for that and we'll continue to reach out in various ways, not just through Dennis's extraordinarily fast Facebook posting. All right, so the, the Maine Department of Transportation is also doing work in town here the week of September 16th. They will have a closure from Beans Mills Road on 41 down towards the chimney. So that's gonna be closed for, you know, from the 16th through the 17th and a little bit beyond. And the traffic will be detoured down Church Road. So that's gonna be an impact for a lot of people.
I didn't know it was multi-day, I thought it was just the 16th. So that's good to know.
They said 36 hours, I'm sure they're probably covering their butts, but you know...
If Mother Nature cooperates.
Right.
Yes.
Quick will they work?
Always weather dependent. Crack sealing will be happening in mid-September as well, weather dependent. We've been kind of having that bumped back a few days here and there, but we're finally getting a firm, relatively firm I think, number from the contractor. Work on the Marinah Hook Lake Outlet Dam is progressing and we are actually at a key phase this week. We're pouring a lot of the concrete around the structure or the mechanical parts that are going to be supporting the dam. So that's a big deal to have that concrete pour happening tomorrow at 7:30. If anybody's interested, you can go watch them pour that, pour that out. And then fall roadside brush cutting is getting underway. We're starting with some of the perennial complaints from our bus drivers who always hit those trees that nobody else does as they go and pick up the kids. So I appreciate their feedback and letting us know what we need to work on and what, what needs attention. So we're working on that. Transfer station, Mike Morang has really stepped up with some of his work at the station. He's been reorganizing and cleaning the office, you would hardly recognize it. And that's the compactor building that's right there by the MSW, also working on some work on the grounds. Excuse me. We will be bringing the revised transfer station operations manual online this month. We will be doing a training with the transfer station staff to make sure that they have all the information, everything they need to succeed and to successfully implement that operations manual.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes sir.
Just real quickly. Mike, I assume, because I know very little about this, so I make assumptions, but in this case, Mike has a number of special certifications that make him uniquely qualified and able to legally run the transfer station. Is that a correct statement?
Yes, both, both of the regular full-time staff and any new staff, if they're there longer term will or have had training from the Maine Department of Environmental Protection on how to recognize and handle wastes. And that's really the core of the training.
Right.
We have special training with our partners like EcoMaine on how to keep plastic film out of the waste stream which saves us money. So it's a combination of legally important and environmentally important training as well as economically and just responsible stewardship type training.
Yeah, I just, I guess my point was I just want to make sure that all of our waste stream eggs aren't in the Mike Morang basket only. And so, you know what I'm saying?
You need a, you need a state certified operator to run the transfer station.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah.
And he is.
Yes. Do we have anyone else?
I am as well.
Okay, all right, gotcha, all right.
In the operations manual, it spells out that the maintenance staff is the designated backup.
Okay.
So for any vacations or sick time or changes of employment, the maintenance staff immediately is the first to go in.
Right, and will they be designated state certified to run it as well?
Unless they go to the school.
Yeah, we do send them periodically to trainings. I think the last one was a couple of years ago, but we try to keep them at least fresh.
Right, okay.
But most of their training happens onsite, so.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
But you said Anna is certified.
No, I don't believe Anna is. She's, I think, taken the, there's two levels of courses. I think she's taken the first level. She hasn't taken the special hazardous waste exclusion type training which deals with how to, you know, things like mercury or special spills, stuff like that. So there are levels of training and certification.
Yeah, I just, well maybe, yeah, thank you, I appreciate that, thank you.
You're very welcome. It's a complicated operation we've got there.
Certainly is, certainly.
So, the new tenant building should be onsite this month and fully functional thereafter. We are again, if folks aren't aware, trying to move our project, our building and the attendants, what am I trying to say here Dennis? We want to get our people out front so that rather than chasing around everybody after they're already in the mix, they can deal with the cash, the load inspections, and the other information upfront like most transfer stations do.
Right, right. There's, there's, yes, there would be, yes, I see what you're saying. It's backwards right now.
It's kind of backwards. They come in and we run around after them.
Yep, exactly.
And we're trying to do better than that, so.
I just, I hope that this, you know, I like the idea of being at the front end assessing loads, assigning a price. But all of our resources can't be at the entry point because people are still going to need assistance in directing what dumpsters they go into because they're like lost souls up there regardless of how many signs you've got. Somebody needs to be there after that check-in process to make sure the stuff goes in the right bin.
Yeah, absolutely. And 95% of the time, we have two full-time staff there and so we have the ability to...
Right, there's always, yeah, so there's, just the fact that they're moving it down there doesn't change the, the service. I guess that's the other thing too, is I think sometimes when people, when you affect the stream, people get a little nervous, but I think this will help the stream.
It will, absolutely.
And it'll, it might be a hiccup to learn how to use it, but I think it's gonna end up being the best thing that we've done in the long run to continue the flow of stuff.
I hope so. The idea is that people, instead of having to either chase down attendants or attendants chase them down, walking in between traffic, walking around vehicles, there is none of that transaction cost.
Right.
You're there, you stop, you talk, you look, you pay, you go, you drop, and you leave. And there is no, or at least less, traffic of pedestrians intermixed with the vehicles which should make the facility safer.
At the starting point, but at the disposal point, it'll be much more expedited and people get in and out.
Yeah, and so we're not, it should make it more efficient, yeah.
And the key thing that the Solid Waste Committee always looks at is the safety aspect. And so we would, we would rather have people backed up waiting to get started because it's very safe to just be sitting in your car waiting for a moment or maybe up to two minutes as opposed to people wandering back and forth with a lot of people carrying things and other vehicles moving and trailers and you don't know who's going where.
Yeah, there are still times where I fear for my life.
Summer weekends could be interesting if that comes through the territory.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I'm gonna try to pick up a little bit here because, you know, I did say I was gonna try to be quick. So we have also purchased additional jersey barriers and concrete curbing to make this a new addition safer. So safety is a big priority. Administration and personnel, personnel matters have consumed a fair amount of time over the last month. However, we've made some progress. Annual reviews have been completed for all full-time staff, so I'm very pleased to have that done. It's an important thing for us and for them. And so we're moving, moving on past that. And we may be advertising for a transfer station attendant position in the next few weeks depending on how things go with internal applicants. So I just want folks to know that there's a possibility, if anybody is interested, that we may have an opening up there. I can't say with certainty what it's gonna look like yet, but we'll see once we get past the internal review process. Announcements, this is where I was gonna talk about the community heart and soul, but we've done that and so, great, thank you. Any questions about my town manager report or activities?
I think we already asked them.
I think we already asked them. The issue of, of the, of the investment strategies for the pension situation is not in that report, but I just want to be on record as saying at some point, we need to have a discussion about how that is managed and what we might, might do to provide additional oversight and do a better job of managing maximum return of those monies for our employees. Got the sense that perhaps we could be doing better.
And maybe that'll come up in the discussion when we look at the other financial thing at the end of our meeting?
It could, yeah, but, but no, you're absolutely right.
I think it's probably best that we do it as a, as a, it's not a pressing need, but it's a long-term situation and when we have more time and there isn't, there isn't a lot of other business, we ought to devote...
We can add it to the future agenda items.
If that's, if that's the sense of the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, no, absolutely. It's important and, you know, we've started the discussion in large part because it has been a long time since we've reviewed or switched anything, so. All right, so my treasurer's report for August, we should be about 17% expended for the month, or the year-to-date, excuse me. And things are looking pretty normal as far as two months worth of financial reporting can, can look normal. There are always fluctuations. Sometimes you have a bond payment that comes in one month ahead of the next, year over year. So there are some fluctuations here, but some notable points are that we do have more money in the bank earlier than we've had in the past because we were two weeks or so ahead of last year as far as the tax commitment, getting those bills out. And when that happens, the money comes in more promptly and so it's always a benefit to us to do that and so I think we're continuing to make progress there. The check reconciliation was completed through July, or excuse me, through August 31st and our accounts were in balance and I didn't see any unusual activity. With respect to the audit, we did have our initial onsite meeting with the auditors this, this August and it was, it was a very good meeting. We had the initial discussion and we have a list of activities that we will be conducting, Teresa as the finance officer, myself as the treasurer, to help gather information, prepare for their review so that they can be efficient and we can get the best possible outcomes from this audit. With respect to the budget, I did include a sample goal form for the budget and warrant process. I do hope the select board can take a look at that. If not, at this meeting, then perhaps independently and send things back to me. Budget goal setting is very important. I often find that it falls in line very well with the goals that you all have set during your retreats, but there are some nuances and some real differences as far as the focus of some of those goals. So if you get a chance, please do review those and give me your feedback about what you think's important and what you want to see happen and how you might like to see that happen. And that's, that's my report for August. I do have all the summary stats as usual in the report.
Okay, thank you. All right, Shana Bellows is here to talk about the elderly tax relief program and, but she's also here to answer any other questions we might have. And you can come right up here.
So we're just gonna take 20026 out of order?
Yes, we're taking it.
Thank you. I know you had made me laugh because I think originally I thought I had another meeting right before.
Well, that was my fault because I got gates confused. We were in a state of constant motion determining when we were gonna meet in September.
Right.
I did not alter my date in the hard-written book which is the gospel for me. If I looked at the computer, I probably would've done better. Can I start with the, the process here in terms of elderly tax stuff since, how do you want to do this, Madam?
Her time is valuable.
Yes.
So we want to get what she has to say and then we, we can ask questions and we can jump in. What do you think Eric?
Oh hey, it's entirely up to you, but how about an introduction and some background?
So I'm Senator Shana Bellows and I live in Manchester. I'm in my second term. I chair the Labor and Housing Committee and I'm also on the Judiciary Committee. And property taxes has been a big priority for me both terms because I think it's probably one of the most significant issues facing our constituents. It's something that I heard time and time again and continue to hear about. And we were able, I, both sessions, I introduced legislation to restore revenue sharing and we did increase revenue sharing to 3% and then 3.5%, which is short of the 5% that my bill would have done, but is an improvement over 2%. So I, I hope that some of that might be used at some point for property tax relief. And then the other piece is the state just increased the homestead exemption to $25,000 for homeowners. And one of the things I tried to do is make sure that homeowners know about the homestead exemption. Sometimes there are misconceptions that it only applies to low-income homeowners, people not realizing that it applies really to everyone. And the state did increase the reimbursement rate for that, so hopefully that will balance out. Eric, if it, if you find that the increased homestead exemption and the increased reimbursement rate aren't balancing out and in some way impacts your revenues here or diminishes your revenues, you know, please let us know because the, the intent was for increasing the reimbursement from the state so that increasing the homestead exemption would help property taxpayers but not harm the town budgets. Now, with regard to seniors, Ralph very kindly sent me a model ordinance from Lyme, Connecticut.
It's just for discussion purposes.
A tax freeze for discussion purposes. This idea of whether it might be possible for, in some cases, for seniors, for the town to freeze the taxes. And so, thank you, because what I was able to do is I shared that model ordinance without attributing it to Reed Field, just saying that a constituent was interested in it. I shared it.
It's okay. You can be very specific. You can be very specific for your town, View Lane.
Well, I, I saved, I, I, I shared the attachment, um, with the, um, analyst for the Taxation Committee in the Legislature, who's really the expert for legislators on tax policy. And I also shared it with Kate DeForre, who works for Main Municipal Association, has actually also served on the Hollowell City Council. So she's been, um, in fact, she and I have had multiple meetings about trying to address revenue sharing. So a few things that I learned that I'd like to share with you, and then we can open it up for a larger discussion to see in which ways I could be helpful. So apparently, if we were to institute a formal tax freeze program, we'd need to change Maine's constitution because Maine's constitution requires that property be assessed fairly and taxed equitably. Um, so a technical freeze, um, wouldn't be constitutional. Now, there was a constitutional amendment proposed by Representative Margaret Craven from Lewiston for a tax freeze, uh, permiss, basically permissibility for that, but the Taxation Committee voted this year unanimously against it. Now, when a committee votes unanimously against something, or actually unanimously in favor, that means there's no debate in the general, um, Senate and House. Um, so we didn't have an opportunity even to debate that in the Legislature because the committee rejected it. That said, there are three provisions that are constitutional that Reed Field could consider, and maybe you already do some form of these. There's a municipal property tax deferral program for residents. Yeah.
That's a problem.
Yeah, okay. So it's residents seventy or older at three hundred percent of, um, poverty, and they can apply, the town can set up a program to allow them to apply, to defer their taxes, um, until their, until their death, and then the estate pays the back taxes. Um, but it's a, it's a deferral program for residents age seventy or older at the three hundred percent of poverty. The second program, um, is the municipal circuit breaker program. Now municipalities, I don't know, does Reed Field have a circuit breaker program?
They do.
You do already, okay. Um, municipalities can narrow the program to make it only eligible for those sixty-two or over, um, and can create, make it sort of a specialized senior, um, benefits program, as it were. Um, and then there's this municipal volunteer program, which would allow the municipality to give someone who is sixty years or older up to a thousand dollars or a hundred times the state minimum wage, which this year would be eleven hundred, next year would be twelve hundred, um, in return for some form of volunteer service. So you could invite someone.
Is there tax exposure for that?
No, because it's not counted as income under the code.
Okay.
So essentially, you can find a way for someone to contribute something to the town, and it doesn't specify hours or anything, and then in turn, give them a benefit of eleven hundred dollars this year is what it would be, up to eleven hundred dollars, that does not count as an income tax liability that they could presumably use.
You could apply that against your property tax.
You could, yeah. Um, so those are the three programs that currently exist under, um, state legislative statute. I reached out to the city of Gardner, um, and asked them to send me information. I haven't heard, I heard back from Representative Harnett, who represents, um, Gardner, used to be the mayor, was the mayor when they implemented it. He was going to get me the information around the details of their program for seniors. Um, he wasn't able to do that before tonight, but that might also be, um, an avenue because I don't know exactly what they're doing in Gardner. I know there was significant publicity.
Maybe you don't want to.
[laughing] There was significant publicity in the paper around trying to provide tax relief for seniors, but I don't know what the details are. So that's basically, um, what I learned. Uh, under the rules, so just, um, I know this is repetitive for some of you, but, but not for everyone in the room. Um, under the rules, in the first year of your legislative session, you can introduce any concept. Any legislator can introduce any bill, and there are no limits, which is why we had over two thousand bills last year.
Wow.
Um, most of those bills, the committees, and that's, that creates pressure on the committees. If a bill isn't fully formulated or, you know, ready for prime time, is, is what they say, most committees will unanimously just say, this one isn't ready, we're just gonna defeat it. Um, and that happens to a majority of the two thousand-plus bills. Um, in the second year of the legislative term, and we're entering into the second year, twenty twenty will be the second year of my term, there are strict rules on what you can introduce. Technically, it needs to be an emergency. Now, um, it needs to be pre-approved by the Legislative Council. The Legislative Council is comprised of the Democratic and Republican leadership, so the Senate President, the Speaker of the House, and then the minority leaders, um, in both the House and the Senate. They have to vote to approve that this bill can move forward as an emergency. Um, that emergency piece is a little bit, um, flexible, shall we say, uh, but the rule that is fairly hard and fast is that the Legislative Council will reject proposals that came the year before. You really are not supposed to present an identical bill that's already been heard, or even something that is substantially similar. So I, I say that just as a caveat. Um, if you wanted me to in twenty twenty-one, try to do what Representative Craven did and try to amend the constitution to permit a more formal freeze program, we could do that, but we couldn't do it until twenty twenty-one because this year, the Legislative Council would say, Representative Craven just did that, you know, a few months ago, and it got rejected, you're out. So I, so that's the one, one piece. Um, and then the only other thing, I always like to tell everyone that, that every bill in Maine gets a public hearing and a committee vote, even if that committee vote is unanimously ought not to pass. Now, the bills that aren't fully formed, usually nobody shows up, and that gives the committee a good indication that it's not ready for prime time. Um, the committees that have huge, long, you know, where, where lots of members of the public come, that's, those are the bills that tend to get a fairly robust debate. Um, so whatever we do, if there's something that you want me to do, um, that's not exactly what was done before, um, I can do that, and it will get a public hearing, and people can come and, and testify.
Yep.
And if you decide you did want to go down the road of tax freeze permissibility in the constitution, I could introduce that in twenty twenty-one, should I be elected again as the senator, um, or, um, there'll be a representative. I think Craig is, I believe Craig is in his last term, so there may be a new representative for Reed Field. So, yeah, great.
Was, was the tax deferral legislation, uh, did that require a constitutional amendment as well?
It did not.
So what is the distinction between a freeze and a deferral? Because as far as, looking at the deferral legislation, first of all, the age is way too high.
Okay.
I, you know, seventy, you could, you'd be a long time retired without the prospect of relief, assuming you retire at the normal age, assuming the normal age is sixty-five.
Yeah.
You've got five years to wait before you can get any help.
Mm-hmm.
Next, if you look at that defer, it's, it's basically a, a waiving of the property tax liability for the qualified individual. Um, let's just assume for the sake of argument, because you have to start somewhere, that the average property tax bill is three thousand dollars. If the municipality gets ten or fifteen of these, you've got thirty to forty thousand dollars in revenue loss right off the top.
Mm-hmm.
And from what I've seen, the small towns, even quote-unquote wealthy ones like Reed Field, that's a significant bite. Then the downside after that revenue loss, which has to be made up by the people who are still paying taxes, is that at the tail end, upon the death of the, of the beneficiary of this relief, uh, if you live ten years, you could have forty or fifty thousand dollars in debt that is due to the town with interest, which basically makes it in a lot of cases impossible for heirs and assigns to assume ownership of the property, even if the will gives it to them, because they've gotta make the town whole. So.
You're talking with a deferral?
Yes.
Okay.
So while it's, it's very generous, uh, and extremely helpful in a, in a macro picture, uh, it has a lot of difficulties with it, whereas a freeze would simply say, okay, you're, here you are. Yes, you may be having difficulty, but your bill will not go up anymore. And if towns are doing their job in terms of keeping taxes low, uh, the incremental loss to the town in terms of maybe another fifty dollars in a tax bill annually over a ten-year period is nothing, and the need for reimbursement would be negligible. So it seems to me that in terms of meaningful relief that could be done near-term without a lot of impact on either side would be the freeze. And I'm not sure I understand why it requires a constitutional amendment if by, by statute, you can defer.
So I presume, and I don't know because I'm not an attorney, and I wasn't, I'm not on the taxation committee.
I bless you.
[laughing] Um, and I'm not on the taxation committee, so I actually wasn't present for the public hearing on Representative Craven's bill, um, although I could look on my phone and see how many people testified. But I presume that the difference is that with the deferral, that tax is eventually getting paid.
Okay.
And so that equitable language, that taxes must be paid equitably, um, so that you're not seeing.
Boy, that's really hair splitting.
Right, no, but.
Because the full tax load at the year of qualification is going to be paid, and you're just losing incremental revenue in terms of minor lead numbers.
Sure. No, I, 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 I hear you a hundred percent, and I hear you in terms of the town and how might, how difficult it might be for the town to give up thirty years of revenue in hope that, you know, in thirty years.
And hope that you get it back at the end without having to do a tax sale.
Right. And so I can see why that's, um, significant, like a significant concern to the town. Um, I trust, I mean, I will say, uh, for better or worse, I do think that the analyst and the legislative, the nonpartisan legislative staff who say, you know, this is the problem or the, the benefit of the statute, I suspect that they're right, that, I mean, there must be some sort of case law that said it was unconstitutional or something. I don't distrust their analysis that it's unconstitutional. Um, but we could, I mean, the thing, it, it doesn't mean we couldn't change the constitution. Maine's constitution gets changed all the time.
Yeah, exactly.
Although it takes two-thirds and a citizen referendum, so.
But that's, you don't want to be changing the constitution if there's no need, if there's another way to do things.
Yeah.
That is certainly the preference.
Well, the circuit breaker sounds to me like it would come the closest.
So Reed Field has a circuit breaker program right now. How does it?
We do, yeah. Well, it essentially piggybacks on the state, uh, property tax fairness credit.
Yeah, which we also increased.
Which is the circus breaker program, right, or formerly. Uh, and so we, we piggyback on that, and we offer, um, if someone qualifies for that program, we offer an additional benefit, uh, an additional, um, return of, of, um, or not return, but, uh, like I said, it'd be a reimbursement, right? So, yeah. Um, we've had that in place for about two years now, um, but the uptake, uh, we've only had one application.
Oh, interesting.
And so I think there's a couple of things that we need to look at, and I'm glad that, Ralph, Bill's gonna get mad at me, I keep hitting my microphone. Um, uh, the, I'm glad that you've started this discussion because we can and should be looking at that program because we started it, we had high hopes. Uh, we actually, um, started it based on a program, um, uh, that we'd seen, you know, in, in, successful, uh, in other towns, uh, Monmouth, for example. Uh, but, um, we haven't been able to, to get traction, and it might be that we, our age limit may be too high, maybe our, uh, incentive is too low. Um, one thing that I've, I've, um, hoped we could do is find, uh, it's a different way of outreach, perhaps even in association with the, the property tax fairness credit program, which hasn't been really a possibility because of the confidentiality component. But the trouble for us is that, um, a lot of our elderly, uh, senior residents already have their homes paid for, so when we send an insert in the tax bill that says, hey, folks, look at all this free money, uh, they don't get it, um, because they, um, they just don't pay attention to the tax bill, uh, because it's, it's already, you know, um.
Because the.
Well, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm kind of reversing that. The, the mortgage, uh, when the mortgage companies get involved, that's what.
Oh, the mortgage companies.
Yeah, no, I, I got that backwards.
They're not getting whacked with an escrow.
Yeah, they, they don't, um, they're not paying into escrow. So it seems as though, um, for whatever reason, we've had trouble with outreach, uh, and I'm hoping to, um, find a way to reach directly to some of those recipients of that property tax fairness credit program.
Did we set up the criteria?
We did, we do. It's an ordinance, local ordinance.
Oh, yeah, Bruce and I, yeah, we, we, this is something that we use.
We all vote in on it.
This, the, the, we use that money and, and rolled it into this program, and we piggybacked off of, uh, programs that were in place already in terms of qualifications. Um, but, but it is, you know, it is sort of one of those things where, you know, we sort of look at it and think, how can we better publicize this? How can we better, uh, you know, utilize this resource? And I think that's important. I think we have done, um, you know, some good work in terms of, of, of protecting that, because I think that's an important part of Reed Field's citizenry.
The property, it's interesting to me that you've only had one application for the property fairness tax credit, well, the, your circuit breaker, basically.
Yeah, I mean, we have hundreds town-wide for the property tax fairness credit program, but the people coming back and applying for our program hasn't happened.
Right, the Reed Field specific.
How many people town-wide are doing property fairness tax credit?
Jesus, it's probably a hundred, two hundred households. It's a lot.
That's interesting. So maybe there's something the state could do. Um, and I don't want to make promises for Main Revenue Service, but maybe my office could contact Main Revenue Service and say, would you send out, um, information about the municipal circuit breaker program?
That would be excellent.
To the hun, to the, to the households that are.
Target those households that are in the program.
Capitalizing the property tax fairness tax credit, because if they don't know about it, and oftentimes, to your point, you know, seniors not, how, how do you, you don't know who's eligible, so you want to make sure that you're not making assumptions.
Right. It would be, it would be more helpful to send it to known parties rather than fishing and hoping that they'll grab on to it. You know what I'm saying?
Somebody sees it and says, hey, yeah.
Right, right, right.
So I can think of two ways that this could happen. A, I could talk to Main Revenue Service about whether they, how much it would cost to do that for the entire state. Are they already providing information to people? Um, could they put an insert in how much, you know, what would be the price? What will we have to appropriate to it? The other thing that I know that happens, at least in the nonprofit world, sometimes, is sometimes an entity will pay another entity to send a blind, you know what I mean? An entity with the addresses will do a mailing for another entity, um, to the addresses that they have, you know, so ACLU, when I was at the ACLU, we might send a mailing to all of, um, uh, Maine Conservation Voters members that we paid for the mailing, but Maine Conservation members sent it to their list.
Would you use their list?
So that we wouldn't see their list, we wouldn't get their list, but we would pay them a small fee to, to send a mailing to their list from, that we, we did.
Yeah.
So I don't know. I'll talk to Main Revenue Service and just say, you know, I have one of my, you know, I'll mention Reed Field. Um, only, only one of the, one of the residents is taking advantage of the municipal circuit breaker program. There is a problem with property tax, you know, high property, you know, challenges for people.
In every small town. It's universal.
Yeah. Um, how can we, how can we increase the uptake for the local program?
Now, I, this is just me probably being naive, but if, let's say we have a hundred people, Eric, do you know who those hundred are, or do you just get the data that there is number X of these applications?
Yeah. When we were building the, uh, the program, I wanted to look at the data. I wanted to see, you know, who and how and, you know, age distribution, but that's all confidential information. Uh, so all we, all we were able to be provided with was the aggregate number of folks with a zero four three five five or, what's the Kentshale zip code, I guess?
Oh, four three four nine.
Four nine. Uh, with those two zip codes that, that were taking advantage of the program. Uh, and so I just looked at it and said, okay, so demographic information, um, with our age distribution, we probably have this number of eligible seniors. We can expect this kind of uptake for the program. Um, but we just, we just haven't seen it. So I, I very much appreciate those suggestions, Senator Bellows, on, on how to move that forward because it would be, even if we pay for it, I'd be happy, uh, I think, to, to get the information out there.
And one of the other ways might also be, I know ARP does some, you know, tax, tax preparation services for seniors. If there's a way to get the information in the hand of the tax preparers.
Yeah.
And I mean, one of the things you should also know is that the budget that we passed, not only did we increase the homestead exemption for all households to twenty-five thousand, but we also increased the property, um, fairness tax credit significantly. Um, so for most households, um, it's going to, uh, approximately double, um, the amount that they can get back from the state. So you're gonna see in, at least in this town, if there are over a hundred people getting the property fairness tax credit, they're gonna get a more sizable check in their next income tax return from that tax credit. And the other thing that we did is we changed the eligibility. Uh, this is information, you know, as we talk, I, I don't know how Main Revenue Service publicizes this, but it used to be you were only eligible if your income tax, if your property tax was more than six percent of your income, your household income, then you were eligible. Now it's going to be if it's more than five percent of your income, then you're eligible for the property fairness, property tax fairness credit. So that's, that's gonna increase, you know, pretty significantly the number of people that are eligible. I mean, it'd hopefully be an easier calcula, well, I guess. And hopefully be an easier calcula, well, I guess it's not that much easier, but, but...
Just being a lower threshold.
Yes, it's a lower threshold to increase the number of families that can access it. Now, that's not specific to seniors, but with a linkage with a circuit breaker.
Well, it seems that we could also do some non-targeted publicity. We could let people who are in touch with groups of just different community groups, so you could let your church leaders know to advertise it in their church bulletins. Or if you have the senior coffee at Marana Cook, it could be provided to people there. And if more seniors start to get that information, even if it doesn't apply to them, they may know someone that it does apply to and they can give it to them. So, I think we could do some community-based outreach, you know, that isn't targeting any person specifically saying, "Oh, we think you're poor, you need this." It's just getting it out to the public.
And if it's too late this year, but next year we could put it in with the tax bills because that would hit everybody, so it's not targeting anyone.
Yeah, which we had done the first year of the program.
And then nobody took it.
Well, just, just one applicant and she wasn't even eligible, so it was...
Oh, no.
It was just, you know, I...
Right.
Do you think they understand? Do you think it's, they understand what it is?
I doubt it.
Well, I kind of like the idea of the, I'm not sure what you called it, but the municipal volunteer program.
Yeah, I like that.
I think we could definitely build something here in town around that because you said that had the lowest age threshold, which was at 60.
Yeah.
And it's not that it has to be, well, you must come and work for 100 hours to get this. It could be kind of anything.
The town can set the criteria.
We can set the criteria. And I assume it can't just be a rubber stamp, just come say that you like the town and we'll give you the $1,000.
Right. No, it needs to be meaningful.
Meaningful, great.
But there are a lot of meaningful, meaningful things that someone might be able to do.
Right.
Here again, the threshold for that particular vehicle seems, seems high if you have young people that are volunteering for your fire company, for example.
I think that specifically is designed to give a vehicle for towns to put money in seniors' pockets who are having a hard time with their taxes.
Like they could read to somebody?
It's interestingly, it's in the tax, it's actually in the same section of statute that the circuit breaker program is. So, I thought that was really, so clearly they were trying to think through... It is, yeah.
And where can we get the specifics of that?
I can forge you these messages that the analyst and the main municipal association sent to me loudly.
If you send it to Eric, he'll send it to us.
And, and...
Because then we could know the income guidelines, if there are any, or know that there are not any.
Yes.
Just so that we have all of that.
The only income guidelines we have are what? For the, for the deferral program.
Right, but I mean for the state program, like that municipal volunteer.
Yeah.
There's also a threshold for income.
So, I'll send to you the three, the descriptions of the three programs with the linkages and the statute to that. And there was one more thing that I was going to say and I'm blanking on it. Forgive me. Oh, I was going to say, some towns, I haven't noticed this is a problem in Reed Field, but I, I did notice, when I, I go door-to-door talking to constituents, you know, in the summer months, and I have noticed that in some towns, people have never heard of the homestead exemption. So, which is astonishing to me because it's such a generous benefit. Or in other town, you know, in some places, some people are like, "Oh, well, I thought that was just for low-income people." So, one thing that you might do is you might just, this would be time-consuming, but you could take your, the seniors that you're particularly worried about and you could just double-check that they're getting the homestead exemption. Because, you know, I've had some people be very thankful and almost tearful because they didn't know what it was. I told them what it was. They applied for it. Of course, they got it. You just fill out the form.
And so it may just be a few hundred dollars, but that's often the break.
It's 25,000 off evaluation. So, depending on the valuation of your property, especially if you're struggling, it depends where you live, but it could be...
In Reed Field, that'd be about $500 once that kicks in. So, we're at 400 now, roughly. So, it's a sizable benefit.
But it is true. People do not know about the program.
So, that's something we could do internally as town employee. We could have the employees go down through the tax list and just see who has homestead exemption and who doesn't. And then maybe target all of those people regardless of age to say, "Why don't you come in and sign up for the homestead exemption?"
Right.
And it would help everybody.
It's available to everyone.
And...
And that's a lot of work, so you could sort by age and do, you know, your 90-year-olds first.
Yeah, try, try, try to prioritize.
I don't know, whatever you want to do.
You don't have anything else to do, right?
But I, I know that's...
Have a volunteer come and do it for us, the municipal volunteer program.
And that volunteer would qualify for 60.
So, I know that would be time-consuming, but that could make a big difference for somebody for depending on who it is that you're thinking about.
I don't think we want to mess with the constitution and jump through those legislative hoops for what essentially is a, is a marginal benefit. If we can capitalize on building awareness for the, especially that circuit breaker. That's, that's real money right off the top that helps.
If you have people who qualify.
Yes.
Which if they're at 300% or more, or less of the poverty line, they're going to be fine. And if they're on social security, they're probably in that 300% of poverty.
And is that a family or is that per person?
It's household, but, yeah. So, again, with seniors, a lot of seniors are qualifying because the 300% of poverty, because the poverty level changes by household, you know what I mean? So, it's 300%.
Oh, so it's different if it's a one-person household or a two-person?
Right, it's combined income depending on...
Yeah.
Okay. Agreed.
And so, but 300% is, again, for retirees, I mean, if you have a pension or you have a 401K, you're not going to be in that category. But if you're just on social security, given...
You're going to qualify.
You're going to qualify, unfortunately. Or if, and quite frankly, I wish it weren't so, but if you're just on the main state pension, unless you were, unless you ended as a commissioner or pretty close to, you're also probably going to qualify because that state pension is not, I mean, it's comparable to social security in terms of its, you know, for your teacher, your retired teachers are all going to qualify. Yeah, anyway. That's another issue. I had a bill to eliminate the income tax on, just on, so, social security is not taxed by the state, but your pension income, if you're a retired teacher, retired state worker, is.
Makes sense whatsoever.
Which makes no sense that we...
Well, except we don't pay tax on it when it's taken out. So, when I, my income...
So, supposedly you're taxed at a lower rate because it's deferred income.
If I earned $30,000 for the federal government, I'm only be, and I, and my state, my retirement contribution was 5,000, then I'm only being taxed on 25,000 at the state level. So, we're not being taxed on it when we earn it. You're being taxed on it when you actually receive it.
But in Pennsylvania, you do not pay tax on, when you put it away, you do not pay tax on it when you take it out.
Most don't. And you're not, and we're, you know, if you're in the private sector, you're not getting taxed on your social security contributions. And given that, that the emperors benefit and social, is a supplement for social security. And if you get both, you get, and this is a whole nother conversation. But if you get both, unfortunately, getting mains pension impacts, diminishes your social security.
By 60%.
Oh, it's just heart-wrenching.
Somebody's planning on retirement already, huh?
Oh, well, yes. Well, I live with a retired teacher, but...
So, you're well aware.
But it's okay because you didn't pay into social security. And there are states where people have a state pension and social security, but then those teachers paid into both.
Yeah.
And so it's, it's okay.
They're trying to get that benefit.
Because social security was meant for people who were paying into it, not...
No, what I was saying is if you, so I worked in the private sector until I was 43.
And then you go into...
And then I go into the state service. If I stay in the state, it's different for legislators, which is a whole nother issue. But say I went into teaching and I taught for more than eight years and I got vested in emperors, then that could diminish, like the social security that I earned would actually be reduced. Not social security I didn't earn, but they actually take away.
Right.
So...
Unless you have 25 years of creditable service.
But that's a different tax.
It's 25 years when you're 40 years old.
Are there any other issues regard, related to the town? Because the deadline, you know, what precipitated this is my email that the, the submission for new legislation is September 27. Like I said, that they're, they're a little stricter in your second year as to what you can introduce. So, I'd have to do research to make sure that a proposal hadn't, like I can't introduce my bill to restore revenue sharing to 5% again, for example, even though I'd really like to. Are there, are there bills that impact the town or anything that you can think of? Or anything that we did that you have a question about? If I can't answer it, I can try to get an answer to you.
I just want to say thank you for revenue sharing.
Yes.
It did make a big difference in town and that money, we made sure that when we did our mill rate calculations, we took that incremental increase and took it right off the top. So, that went, in Reed Field, it went straight to property tax relief as it was intended to. So, we were very grateful to have that and it made a big difference for us. It was, you know, tens of thousands of dollars, so.
I'm so glad.
Yeah, it was really, really good.
I think there were a number of things that benefited Reed Field in terms of the legislative session in regards to solar energy and things of that nature that we are very excited to go through. So, we're feeling pretty good, I think.
Yeah.
Great.
Do you know how your income forecasts are doing?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Because that's going to be the driver for...
It is going to be a driver. And we didn't dip into the rainy day fund, contrary to some reports.
Rhetoric, yeah.
So, so the budget was based on, you know, we actually ended up putting some...
Some people would have said it might have been a little too aggressive, but you never know until the money starts coming in.
So, the revenue projections are above what was forecast for this year.
Say hallelujah.
And that is very fortunate. Maine is in a great place in terms of tax revenue right now. Employment is very high. I toured BIW this morning. There are over 1,000 BIW jobs in Kennebec County. They're, they have about 6,300 people on staff right now. They're trying to hire 1,500 more people this year and they can't.
If they can find them.
They can't find them. So, I do think that revenue forecasts for the near-term are quite high. I think there's some market volatility and some softening worldwide that makes me concerned about 2020 and beyond. And I think we just need to be aware that probably, you know, this is a great...
Not overly optimistic when you're crafting your budget on the revenue side.
Right, yeah. I think that that's going to be really important. And I do think that there were a few items in this budget that we won't, that are not ongoing commitments. And so, you know, I had a bill, for example, to fund an online program to have school lunch, the, you know, signing up for school lunch for kids, be electronic and have a statewide system that, that school districts could access instead of developing their own software. There will be some ongoing costs with that, but the big startup cost is, is a single cost. So, there, there are things like that where this budget has allocations that you won't have to see in future budgets. And we'll see. We'll have to be judicious. Maine requires a balanced budget. So, state of Maine...
I think most, all states do.
Yeah, so, because we can't print money.
The big hope will be that the generous increases that we saw this present fiscal year will at least be able to be maintained.
Yeah.
Well, and the increased aid to education is really critical because I don't know that you're aware, but in the Marana Cook district, the towns, the four towns that comprise that district have always been very generous in voting in a lot of what is requested. And the school budget continues to rise very disproportionate to the, the local town municipal budgets. In our town, not as much as in some other towns who have much lower enrollments. Like Wayne, for instance, really suffers on that, that aspect of it. So, the increased aid to education and getting that higher is really helpful, as you are well aware, because it brings money from all over the state and distributes it.
Yeah, much, the, the distribution scale is much more equitable and it, and it keeps districts together as opposed to, you know, "I'm going here, I'm going there." And when you start fragmentation and people looking for a better deal, it will become impossible to run a school system.
Yeah. And we were able to restore the funding for the school-based health centers for Marana Cook. I co-sponsored that legislation because I just thought it was such a huge priority. And so that's, you know, something that as long as I'm there, I'll, I'll continue to monitor because I think those are, you know, really important. My mom's a nurse, just if you can take care of kids before, you know.
Yeah, all wellness care is cheaper than sickness care.
Yes.
What's the old prevention and cure?
Oh, it's prevention.
Yeah, there you go.
Well, if the healthcare system has finally figured it out, then it's time for government to do it, too.
Yeah. So, one more thing that you may be interested in, so obviously we passed the transportation bonds, broadband, there's some conversation about whether we may try to, given that revenue forecasts are so significant, we may try to fund, at least do it one time, funding a broadband through the budget in the supplemental budget next year rather than through bond.
That would be good because we're all in the process.
Right. And I know Reed Field just received the planning grant and I want to see more money go into broadband. Because I really think, I mean, on, I think broadband is where, you know, our economies need to be. And also, honestly, healthcare, remote healthcare for seniors, that helps them stay in their homes through telehealth.
That's something that was mentioned by Bruce as well.
Yeah.
And keep them out of nursing homes, out of group homes.
Yeah.
It's much cheaper for them. It's better for them health-wise and mentally, so it's a huge benefit.
Yeah, so that'll be a big priority in January. I think there is bipartisan interest. I talked to Senator Black next door, Franklin County, and I don't remember, no, I guess it's Senator Timberlake that's in Wayne. But Senator Black is really committed and I think in January we'll, we'll move forward with broadband. And then land for Maine's future, again, I think that there's some bipartisan interest. I think there's some question about the amount and the timing. Had people felt it was too soon and, and so that's why apparently that, that failed. But I think there'll be another conversation around land for Maine's future. Trying to remember if Reed Field's, I know you guys have a great trails program. I mean, you've done a lot of local work, but I don't know if you have any...
We benefit a lot from the Kennebec land trust.
Kennebec land trust is most, yeah.
So, and I know our conservation commissions are having a potluck on Saturday, but I'm going to be on my anniversary, little mini anniversary trip, so...
I guess you're excused.
That's it, good.
And you're going to get back to me at some point...
Oh, my goodness.
On the traffic light at the intersection of 202 and 17.
Thank you so much for reminding me of that.
Because that affects a lot of Maine, Reed Field people.
That's right. That's right. So, I sent a message to MDOT and I didn't hear back and I should have followed up today before I came here.
It's okay. As long as you follow up sometime.
Is this a separate thing?
Well, I don't want to take up a lot of time, but the very brief aspect of it is the lights that change at that intersection there, and it does go across, but it becomes the pond road in Manchester. But the lights signal within one second, the green and the red.
Oh, really?
So, when it goes red on 202, within one second, it's green on 17. And there have been multiple accidents there. And Manchester Fire Department is constantly...
So, you need a longer yellow is what you're talking about.
Absolutely. They're constantly responding. And Manchester passed a local ordinance this year that charges people for costs that they don't recover from insurance because it's costing Manchester so much to respond to the Route 202 incidents.
Prying people out of cars.
And it's, and people statewide just think that red doesn't mean stop anymore. And you see people running red lights and stop signs everywhere. But it doesn't help when the traffic lights are timed incorrectly. And I did a lot of research and found out about it, so I've just asked Shanna if she could look into it, so.
It's all important.
No, thank you for reminding me and I, I'm sorry that I didn't follow up with them today.
It's okay.
Unlike the tax analysts, they weren't quite as quick.
Right, yes, there you go.
Spending that bond money or something.
Well, it's, it's not winter, so they're all out working.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Well...
Is there any public...
Oh, yeah, any public questions?
Any...
Yeah, I didn't know if...
Sandy?
What?
Grace, you, any public questions for Shanna Bellows?
You're just cold.
It is cold, darn it. Just factor of age, I think.
Well, thank you so much for coming.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your help.
Thank you so much. Bruce is going to be upset that he wasn't here.
Oh, yeah.
Because we've been wanting to do this for a year to have you come back.
Yeah.
So, now you've been here, so that's awesome.
I, I texted him and he said he would be in Colorado and I told him I'd be happy.
He's having a good time.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's fine. He's doing fine.
Thanks again. Really appreciate your service. It's a lot of work.
Well, we really appreciate you. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, indeed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh, hi.
Thank you.
I skedaddled in here so quickly. It was just tunnel to...
Okay. Thank you.
To everybody, see you soon.
Okay, we're back to boards, committees, commissions. We got minutes from the Board of Assessors from May thirty first, two thousand nineteen, age-friendly committee minutes for July tenth, two thousand nineteen, and the enterprise committee minutes of July sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Um, yeah, I would just, can I just mention something? I would draw attention to the, um, the minutes for the age-friendly committee. The Reed Field U is something that Romaine and that committee's trying to, to do and, and I, I think it's a really cool thing. If you have something, basically, it's, uh, the idea that, uh, you know, if, if you have a skill, if you want to maybe grab and, and teach something, it's basically like a very informal, continuous learning, sort of adult learning thing, and I think that's cool. So stop by the library and check it out.
Okay, very good. Uh, any public comments?
So Y'all will pass or whatever?
You have to, you have to come up to the podium.
Come on up, Pete.
Sandy. No, I, we can, but the public can't.
Right, it's the, it's the- It was worth it.
Camera shy.
Grace, no? Okay. New business, twenty oh twenty-one. Consider an award for repairs to the municipal salt sand building. Eric?
Uh, what we should, um, the, the modified agenda had-
Oh, is this a public hearing?
Yeah, the public hearing.
Okay.
Because we had, um-
It's not your printed one, but it's the one online.
Oh, it's not, it's the one I got out of the, when did you do this one?
Well, it was the one that was posted and then we had to modify it because we hadn't received information from the state of Maine about general assistance maximums, and so then that was, um-
This is just some pro forma stuff, isn't it?
Back up online.
Okay.
So the, the public hearing for the general assistance ordinance is just an opportunity for anybody to comment on, um, the proposed changes, which I'll summarize and say that appendices A through C, we've seen small increases in the, um, uh, maximum, uh, income and benefits uh, that are, um, associated with the general assistance program. Uh, it's good to see an increase here because these are, are essentially desperately low numbers to begin with. Uh, and so I wish they'd come up more to give a little bit more opportunity for folks. But, um, what we have is, is a small increase, a couple percentage points here and there uh, on those first three appendices and the last, uh, D and H are both the same. So, um, this is something we do every year and, uh, in association with the state of Maine and the Maine Municipal Association.
Okay, so what you need from us is a vote two.
That would be the, the twenty-one with the new, with the revised agenda.
But first, we're going to have to open a public hearing to ask if the public wants to make any comments on the appendices and if not, then we can close it.
Correct.
Correct.
And if they do, then we have to be able to have Eric answer for us.
All right.
All right, then we're going to open a public hearing on the, um, since I don't have it on my address-
Amendments, uh, the APS.
General Assistance Ordinance.
Yeah.
And-
We're open.
Is there any public comment?
Anyone? Anyone?
No public comment.
Okay, yeah.
So now we can close it? And-
Now we can-
Now we need to-
Now we get to vote?
Now we have to vote, right?
Yep.
Yes.
To accept the appendices as they're presented?
As, yes, as amended as they're presented.
So I'll make a motion that we accept the general assistance ordinance appendices A through D and appendix H for twenty nineteen, twenty as presented.
I second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
And here comes the paper. We don't have anything that we could've done on it anyway because they are the state numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's pro forma, it's just, we just need to send it on down the line.
It's pretty interesting how they do that to us.
There you go.
Thank you.
We do have, if we wanted to really stretch it, the option of, um, doing our own analysis and assessment. It's kind of like what people can do with speed limits. If you, if you want to hire a traffic engineer, they'll let you set your own speed limits. Uh, we would have to do something similar to set our own, uh, general assistance, um, uh, maximums. But again, I think those are even subject to state review, so, uh, we're happy to take, uh, the state suggested guidelines.
Amen.
Okay. Thank you. Very efficient.
It's like a shuttle.
I'm not as quick as I used to be.
Oh, yeah, any one of those pizza trays, like they put the pizza in the oven.
Oh, yeah, the little thing.
Um, all right.
That's right.
All right, um, now it's twenty oh twenty-two. Consider the award for repairs to the municipal salt sand building. Eric?
Yes, uh, so we did, um, put this project out to bid with engineering support. Uh, we had a proposal drafted and specifications drafted by AE Hodson engineers who had done work for our, um, for the town of Reed Field in the past. And, um, we had one, um, result, one, one bidder, uh, which is a kind of a red flag uh, in general in the bidding process. Uh, they also came in twice what the engineers estimated cost for that project would be. Uh, and so, um, in discussing this with the engineer today and with the road committee members uh, over the past couple of days, uh, we believe that it would be ill-advised for the town of Reed Field to award this bid at this time. However, uh, we will be pursuing a couple different things. Uh, one would be an engineer having a discussion with, uh, this one bidder about why, uh, why it was so expensive relative to the initial, um, estimate. But also to have the town of Reed Field look at the possibility of, of a new construction as opposed to rehabilitation. Uh, the idea of rehabilitation is that we get some extended life, um, at a lower cost per year because we already have a, a portion of that, um, investment already existing. Uh, with a price like that, it begs the question of whether, uh, a, a cost of four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars for a new building might be more palatable and more, uh, a wise, uh, more of a wise investment on an annualized basis if it lasts fifty years. So we're going to do a little bit more looking at that, um, and, and see. But at this point, we're recommending that we not make an award.
So then we don't have to do anything, right? We don't have to-
Nope, no, unless, unless you choose to, uh, take a different course.
Well, I have a couple of questions. So when was this building constructed?
Uh, it was probably twenty-five to thirty years ago.
And with the refurbishment that we were expecting, how many years were we expecting that would extend the life?
We were looking about twenty years.
So that would put it into the fifty-year range that you were talking about a replacement. So it might be reasonable, but I'm not sure why it would be, so it wouldn't, never mind. So I don't think it would be reasonable to expect a new building to last fifty years if the current building only lasted twenty-five years.
Well, as a point of fact-
Technology's changed a lot.
Yes, isn't that the whole point?
That is, so, so the, the rebar wasn't epoxy coated, there wasn't a proper salt, uh, preventing admixture in the concrete. Uh, and the building unfortunately was not properly maintained with sealant. Um, if you seal concrete, it, it helps, keeps, keeps that salt out. Um, we can't find any record of, of sealing happening, uh, in any time since that building was first constructed. So perhaps it was done, but if it was, it wasn't adequate and the concrete itself and the rebar wasn't up to the task of dealing with a salt environment. Uh, so, uh, a new building would be constructed with those things in mind. Epoxy coated rebar, uh, admixtures in the cement to make it hydrophobic or repel the, the salt ions. Uh, and a sealant program that we would be able to keep up with, like we do with our town trucks, where we spray them with, uh, a, um, a malsified substance every couple of years to make sure that they don't, um, have as much contact with, uh, you know, the, uh, those corrosive materials. So, yes, uh, there is a real possibility that a new building would last fifty years and I, I think that when we are looking at this, we can assess some of that.
Okay.
My only concern, oh, you're not done.
I have two more, but go ahead first.
Well, we're talking about if, if we decided to go down the road of a, of a new building. We don't know what road treatment technology is going to be like in fifty years. Will we even be using salt and sand? That's my only concern. Are we building something-
Using one or the other?
That, that, uh, yeah. I, I don't know. I, we could be, we could be into brine, uh, which some states are using, which is terrible.
Or maybe we'll go back to rolling the snow and drive on top of that.
Yeah, oxen and-
Um, that's a great point. So, yeah, I think we'll still have fire departments in fifty years. I don't know if we'll still have libraries, I hope we do.
Please God.
But if you look at fifty years ago, what we had and now we have these little machines that we all live with in our phones, who would've guessed? So one other comment, now I'm going to forget the second one. Shoot. When I was reading this, I didn't pick up on this the first time, but the engineer's estimate was based on what Mount Vernon paid in twenty thirteen?
Yes.
And that's where we got our number from? I guess I would've expected that that would've changed a lot and we would've expected this to be not double, but I would not have expected it to be the, the ninety thousand or whatever it was.
Yeah, he'd come up with a ninety thousand dollar number.
Yeah, I, I guess I, I'm thinking that's a little remiss on the part of the engineer. Why would we expect something that was built in twenty thirteen to cost the same as it costs now?
I, I guess I'll clarify that.
Yeah.
Those, those numbers, I believe, were adjusted for inflation. I think that what he did was look at the work that was done in two thousand thirteen, the scope of that, the cost of that, and extrapolate that out, so.
Okay, that was not clear in the, in what I read. It just says it's based on the twenty thirteen numbers from Mount Vernon.
Yeah, that was the basis, but, you know, my understanding is that that work was done. It was done, um, to give us a number that would be reliable and accurate for twenty nineteen, given the fact that Mount Vernon had actually a lot more work done. So at this point, we're looking at a project that has less work that costs more than what they had, uh, which is, is kind of out of, out of sync and recognizably so.
Well, I would also remind the board of a couple moments, especially that I have noticed since I've been on here, of similar sort of things that we try to, you know, be very smart about, like the Morana Cook Dam. You know, and trying to fix that and then, and trying to do a bunch of patchwork and I, you know, it, obviously, obviously if this was built the first time and it sort of got punted and it wasn't done right, then let's do it right this time. And I certainly, I mean, I agree, I think paying, to be honest, I think paying ninety thousand to rehabilitate an old building is unbelievable. You know what I mean? So, so, you know, I would, one would have to think that whatever we come up with in this particular time would have, um, you know, some, some sort of more clever care and things like that. I just, I, I just, I, I think it's something that obviously the town needs. We're going to have to figure something out.
Well, and that brings, thank you, you reminded me of my other point, which is just going to be ongoing through probably all three bids, but, um, transparency, um, to the public as well as to me just sitting here. I'm startled once again to hear that there aren't records of what was done to a building. Um, and it's not just over one town manager. This is twenty-five years, we're talking over multiple administrations. So Eric, can you give us just a brief synopsis of what you are currently doing in your tenure here so that the public understands-
Excuse me?
What records are being kept so that we can go back and look at work that's been performed to maintain the assets that we have currently?
Sure, so we do have, um, and this is something that Stefan has started, a capital investment plan um, that, uh, documents the work that's being planned and completed. Uh, and so that, that is something that, that we have. Um, and just to back up a little bit, I'm not certain that, that routine maintenance such as a, a sealant application would be something that we would see. So, so I can't say that that's something that should've been on file, it just doesn't look like it was done. But, um, so there's that. But, but as far as moving forward, we do keep, uh, very detailed records and have schedules for preventive maintenance for our municipal equipment and vehicles. Uh, and, um, now, I think, uh, with, with some of our buildings, uh, now that we're starting to catch up on those and get some of this work done, so.
So there's actually, let's just say for the town office, we are now keeping a file that says the roof was maintained, this was done in twenty fifteen and in twenty eighteen we then did this. And so someone could look at that, the next group of people who come in to take care of the town would be able to look back and see when things happened.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's in an organized place that's easy to locate.
Yeah, and that, and that was something that was started under Stefan. I, I don't know, uh, I haven't seen anything before that, uh, at least nothing formal or at least nothing in one place. But Stefan did start that process of the, um, at least the, the inventorying of assets and when assets were improved, uh, I think going back probably it must've been two thousand and three with him. But, um, uh, we're continuing that and improving on it.
That's great because I think that's key to these discussions and it's key to having people buy into the fact that, okay, we, we don't, maybe didn't want to spend ninety thousand, now we probably really don't want to spend two hundred thousand, but then we might ask people to spend four hundred thousand on a new building. Oh, how, how do we know you're not just going to let that fall apart? And I think we have to have a plan that we can show, well, here's how we know. Because over the last fifteen years, this is what we're doing for record-keeping now.
And your, your records can ultimately show whether or not the people who are spending the money
choose to do it or not. The recommendation from the elected boards and responsible officials may be to do X, but if the town says no, uh, you know, then it's, then it falls on the people that are going to the polls.
I also just, I'm going to be the Burgoyne proxy. Um, since we know that we're not going to move, we're not doing any bids on the salt shed.
We should move along?
Yes, ma'am. Is that okay? Because we still have thirty minutes of things discussed and thirty-five minutes of meeting.
No, it's eight fifteen, we only have twenty minutes.
Oh, it's eight, oh, I thought it was eight thirty, okay.
Unless you guys change the-
I think the revised, the revised one did.
Yeah, that's what, that's right, see what I mean? Sorry, sorry.
It's actually back to the original.
You have the gavel.
I think that conversation we just had is going to apply to all three bids, so it will be shorter.
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
Okay, so we're not doing anything on this and you're going to go back to the drawing table.
With the road committee, uh, yes, and, and our engineer.
The building will be safe and usable for the employees for this winter?
Yeah, uh, the, the issues that we have are, um, they're getting into the structural components, but the structural components are still there in most places. There are a few places where we've lost some rebar, but, um, it's fairly limited. Uh, we need to do something in the next year or two, but, uh, we can go another winter with this without, um, without real, any, any real issue.
Good.
So those walls are, uh, eight or ten inches thick concrete, so, um, we've lost-
No, I feel you, but if we could, you know, squeeze it out and then do it right the first time.
Yep.
Okay. Two zero zero two three. Consider the award for replacement of the Reed Field Public Library roof. Eric?
Yes, and so we did receive two bids for this, uh, one for a hundred and eighty-nine thousand and one for a hundred and thirty-one, nine thirty-one with some addendums, um, possible add-ons. Uh, this also was double what the engineers had, um, for the low bid, had, had recommended would be a reasonable, um, project scope. And I've spent a fair amount of today and, and a little bit of time Friday trying to talk with the engineers, um, uh, email and, and try to understand why we got these numbers that were so far out. Uh, they're using software that they pay thousands of dollars a year for that aggregates cost information from across state of Maine and, and specialized even for Kennebec County. So, uh, they have high levels of confidence in the numbers they're providing to us. And we were trying to figure out what happened, why are these numbers so high? One of the key statements that I heard back was that these are not necessarily the costs of these projects per se. These are the opportunity costs for a contractor to do this work instead of the other work that they could be doing, uh, at this, in the same time period. Uh, and so, um, the library project is very straightforward. We know exactly what the trusses are going to be, how much plywood we're going to need, what the, uh, square feet of insulation ought to be, uh, the, the cost of a metal roof. All of those things are very, fairly, fairly well-known. Um, the cost of labor, we know has been going up. It's a very hot market, as Senator was saying, uh, Senator Bellows, that, you know, we're, everything's going uh, and, um, there's not a lot of people and there's, um, not a lot of available, um, time for, for contractors. So the costs go up. But this one is a little bit different. It's not quite like, uh, the, um, salt sand building where we can go another year or two. Uh, in speaking with the engineer, we really feel, uh, that this project, um, uh, needs to happen. We also feel that it's too expensive as presented. Uh, so there are some things we need to look at, but the recommendation right now that I have for this uh, is that, um, we, uh, recognize HE Callahan as the low bid for this project uh, and work with them to, um- I'd like to have some more certainty in their numbers. Unlike the other bidder, they did not provide itemized numbers. I want an explanation, and I want to have the opportunity to, to discuss that with them and see if there are areas for cost savings in those areas that we really can't see into right now. So, unfortunately, this, this is more than what we had originally intended for the entire budget for the, the library improvements. So, this would mean that we'd have to put on hold other components like the second-floor egress and some of the interior work, unless we're able to see a drastic reduction in price, which I, you know, I'm not saying that we could or even should try to get there. But we also know that this is an essential project. We can't not fix the roof on this building. And we do have a fairly large pool available with a fairly large contingency for the combined fire station and library project. Those were budget numbers we worked with. If we need to do a little bit of additional fundraising or take additional steps to try to move forward with the less time-sensitive fire station project, we have real estate. We have room to work on that issue with those funds, and we can try to find a, a way to move that forward. But this one needs to happen, so I'm kind of getting long on that point, but I did just want to make it that...
I'd like to ask you a question.
Yeah, sure.
Could this be put to rebid again?
It could. However, it wouldn't be able to be done in a timely fashion. We'd get the same results. I mean, only having two bidders isn't great either.
That's what, yeah.
And so, but we're not gonna get any better results trying to get this done for this year. The only real option for putting this out to bid again is to do it in the spring and say, okay, you've got eight months or a year to do this. That might result in better pricing, but it also won't get the work done in a timely fashion.
Another winter with a gaping hole in the roof.
Well, it's not, it's not a gaping hole, but it's...
A lot of heavy snow and wet snow with that roof.
It's a huge liability.
It's a big gamble, and, I mean, you just...
All right, I just wanna make sure, because this seems unbelievable.
You just look at what the weather did in the last week to different places. For fifty thousand dollars is really what we're looking at here. Is it worth the gamble in a building that we've pushed down the road for thirty years, and we finally committed to doing it, and we have the money? We don't have to borrow this money, and we put the two buildings together as a project, not as X for this building and X for that. We had ideas of what we thought it would come to. I think it would be wise to, to do what Eric said and try and get a better idea on the costs. And then if there are ways to economize, or maybe they just gave a ballpark number, and when they go back and you're asking them for specific amounts, it may come in at a different, it could come in higher.
Yeah, just the fifty thousand dollar, fifty-eight thousand dollar disparity in the two bids, and then the sixty thousand dollar margin of error from the, from the engineers. It seems very strange to me.
It is, and it's, and it's something that, in aggregate, we were talking about. We had three bid openings on Friday. Every single one of them came in twice what the engineers estimated.
Eric had a real good day.
I had, yeah, I did. But, and there could be a couple reasons for that. Again, the timing.
Timing.
The timing, also the, the economy right now, as, as everybody's been saying. Those numbers that they use for cost estimates are from the last couple of years. It, it, it's a much different time than it is right now, so...
I would suggest, I get the sense that we want to move forward, but I would suggest a way to do that would be to designate Callahan as the preferred bidder and instruct Eric to go back and work with him to itemize the numbers and shave what we can out of there to get a, to get a, to get a more realistic number of...
Can we do that, Eric?
Yes, you can.
Is that a motion, Ralph?
There's a sense that that works, or yes, now it's motion.
Danny, second?
I gave Kristen the heads up. That sounds like motion. I think it's the right thing to do. It's, obviously, we don't want to spend the money that way, but I think it's the responsible way to spend the town's money, to maintain the structure of the building, to maintain all of the work that's been done recently to that building by the library board and their volunteers, and to protect the library itself.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There's no value engineering to this project.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
You moved it along good.
Thank you very much. That was the hardest one we had to talk about tonight, I believe. It's...
Next.
Next one is, I'll consider an award for accessibility improvements to the Reedville Town Office. Eric?
All right.
Sorry.
Can I ask you a question before you start?
Sure, go ahead, yeah.
This one's been put off for a number of years, and we haven't had any incredible crisis of need for this. So, is this one that we could put off till next spring and have rebid when the timeframe isn't as much of a crunch?
You, you know where we're headed. Yes. That is, that is the goal. And so, I guess I'll, I'll clarify and say, I have, I spoke with the H.E. Callahan about the library bid at the bid opening. I spoke with the Knowles, who had put the one bid in for the Salt Sand, and said, we're put, we're probably gonna put that off. So, I have had a chance to speak with some of these bidders, and I've spoken with a couple of the contractors who bid for the, the project here at the town office, and said, well, look, you know, you, you guys came in twice what our engineer estimates were. The engineers are confident with their numbers. You know, we can't do all this stuff. We don't want to spend our money on all of these projects in this way, and we appreciate your bids, but sometimes we just need to wait and see if a different environment, a different time, will give us a better result. And so, that's what I suggested to the bidders I talked with today, that my recommendation to the select board, and apparently the, the mind of some of the members at least, is that this one is important, but we should be kind of holding off, reassessing, and putting it out to bid again to see if we can do a little bit better. In the meantime, I think we should be budgeting more money for this project, because if it costs fifty thousand dollars to do it, and that's a real number, then we should do it. I honestly feel that way. This has been an important piece for the town for the last couple of years, and we just haven't been able to get it done. But here we are, and we have at least a start, I think a very solid start, so...
What did we budget for?
Uh, we, we budgeted, we had an estimate of twenty-five thousand, and we started off the year with about that amount. We spent some on engineering, so now we're, we're below even what we could accomplish with the engineer's original estimate, but not far. So, I think that if we put another twenty thousand dollars into this in next year's budget, we could be in position to, to do a bulk or, or all of this project with a little bit different environment.
Good. I'm of the mind that we should put this on hold until next year under your advisement.
Yep.
So, then we don't have to do anything else.
We don't have to. And with the disparity in the bids, we might want to have a bid go out for someone to demo and a bid to go out for someone else to reconstruct.
It is bizarre how different those things are to me. It's so bizarre.
Yeah, it's amazing.
Because those, there seems to be a real disparity in that piece of these bids, and maybe splitting it would be...
Good idea. Usually, I think you're gonna stop, find a one-stop shop that's gonna be generally easier, wouldn't you, Eric? Okay, do all of it together.
It is, and the same thing with the library. I mean, if we were, if the town were to G.C. that project, heck, that would be, we'd probably save a whole bunch of money right off the bat. However, finding and mobilizing and getting everybody to work together and not have the roof exposed for two weeks while we're trying to get the next contractor in, that's a lot of risk and a lot of responsibility.
Well, you've got two people setting up equipment.
Yeah, and so, with this one, it's a, it's a low-risk situation, so, you know, I don't, I don't think that there's any need. And that variability is a sign that folks are just throwing money in here and there to try to... I'm not trying to be too negative about it, but because they, they have a kind of an end goal or an, an number where it's worth their while, because that's what they'd make doing something else. And so, that opportunity cost really does show up, I think, in this bid particularly, except for that outlier of the third.
And you've done a, a good job in the last couple of years of changing things up when we have elections, of having a good ramp system and moving the parking out, so there's adequate parking for those who have disabilities to get in the building. That's been much improved over several years ago.
Yeah, it, it has, and it, and it's an accommodation, and it's not, it's not the end. So, I hope people can be a little bit patient as we try to ramp up that process.
Okay, has everybody agreed on that then?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, and I think that just goes to show that sometimes you gotta check and adjust, but if we could, it'd take two years to do that, I think still...
Yeah, well, like I was telling Ralph, I thought we were doing awfully good when we did our paving bids, and we came in lower than M.D.O.T. per ton, and then we got a reality check on Friday, so...
Flapped around pretty good.
Sandy? State, state your name, so...
My name is Sandra.
Rourke.
Yes.
Thank you, Sandra.
Yes, I just wanted to know, what did you want to change in the town office?
So, so, the, the project actually is almost entirely outside of the office. That walkway that we have in front, where if you open the doors, you have to step off the curb in order to go around the door to get back in, that, that doesn't meet accessibility standards for the Americans with Disabilities Act. We're okay for now, because we haven't done any major rehabilitation work to our drive, our parking area or to the, the curbing itself. In order to do that, we need to come into compliance. So, there's a, I guess, an operational improvement reason for doing this, but it's also just, it's the right thing to do to make it easier for people to get into the building. So, what this project proposed was basically adding three feet or so to that curb, maybe three and a half feet, so that we can actually have people go around and in without having to step off the curb, so they will have access. The grades that we have right now on that walkway are a bit steep, and actually, the parking areas in front of it are also a bit steep. They exceed what's allowed under the American, Americans with Disabilities Act. So, this project would have cut out back probably twenty feet from the existing curb and regraded that, so that we have a more level surface for people who are using those accessible stalls to get out and then access the building. So, the scope really is extending the sidewalk and then leveling the parking area around and in front of that walkway.
Okay, so, how many crippled people do we have here in town that comes to the town office?
Well, I'd use a...
Any kind of idea of how many?
We have a lot of young people and a lot of old people, and one of the things about these improvements is that beyond being required by, by law, if we are to improve anything out there, unless we have the pavement crumble, it benefits everybody by making the grades more accessible and the, and the building itself more accessible. So, I can't say how many people utilize it. It's like the elevator. We spend, you know, a couple hundred dollars every, every few months on repairs for that. We have inspection fees. It probably costs us two thousand dollars a year, and eventually, it's gonna cost us, you know, twenty-five to thirty or more to replace it. But it's a requirement of a public building, so I don't necessarily want to put it in those terms, and if I guess, if I did, I wouldn't even have the ability to give you a number, unfortunately, so...
I guess that's a good idea for twenty-five thousand, you say, roughly?
For the elevator, I really don't know.
No, for the improvements we were talking about, yes.
Yeah, I mean, and those costs, I mean, what we're getting for a bid result i- is, is, again, twice what the engineers think it should cost. It's twice what I think it should cost. So, all we can really do is, is wait a little bit and see if the economy slows down, and...
That's why we're not gonna do it.
The other thing, you might be able to cherry-pick some of these things to try to fix them individually, but the ADA rules say that once you touch one of them, you've gotta be in compliance across the board. So, curbing or, or grades on the, on the pavement can't be done as a standalone. It has to be looked at as a project in its entirety. You're forced by federal law to, to do it all, or, or you don't do anything.
When they put the steps up there to the library, I mean, it's not steps, it's the plain rim. That would be ideal, I would think, down here, but the grade of it probably wouldn't work.
Yeah, well, the grade of that actually isn't, isn't in compliance either, so...
It was better than it was, but it's not what it should be.
Right. It's not code.
Did we, did we look at just changing the doors, Eric?
Uh, we, we, we did, but that would not address the grade issues, so...
So, if you fix that, you gotta fix everything?
Yeah, that's my understanding, and I, I don't know exactly the difference between the interior versus exterior components of the building, but I can certainly ask our engineer to clarify if, if that's something we could do. And that might, if it is, I think it's a step that we might take.
Might be able to change that whole door structure on the entrance there and have, like, a hand offer, the doors swing in and they swing shut for under fifty thousand dollars.
Public egress, you gotta, they gotta open out.
Sandy?
I just got one more thing.
Sure.
Now, after you've made the entrance out there right, someone with a wheelchair, how are you gonna make those steps after they get in?
They get in the elevator. The elevator stops on the first level, and then the elevator stops at this level. I know from using my Brooklyn Light scooter.
I wouldn't think so, but it actually does go to the second, the first floor, yeah.
It's a little claustrophobic, but it works.
Yep, yeah.
You just have to shut both doors.
Just if we're gonna go back and look at it, maybe we could look at that aspect and just see what was viable.
Yeah, and that could be a possibility.
So, we're all of the mind to sort of table this for a while?
Seems that way.
You're gonna check on changing the doors, and we're gonna table the rest of it?
Yes, yes.
All right.
How much do we have left, and how much time do we have?
We only have one item left.
We have one item for ten minutes, and at eight-twenty-five, I'm gonna let you know, yeah.
Oh, great.
It's two oh, oh-two-five. Consider revised policy on activity at the Reedville Transfer Station. Eric?
So, yeah, we, we've had a long history of, of people utilizing the transfer station for things other than disposing of their waste, and that's, that's...
Waste is waste, you know.
Waste is waste, yeah, but, but, and that's okay. And in the past, the select board has taken action to try to arrange some of that activity in order to maintain the safety of the facility. Back in, let's see, current policy was established in 2011 that basically said you can be there, you can do stuff that doesn't have to do with disposing of your waste, but you need to stay out of the way. But that left a lot of interpretation to the staff, and especially to the folks that were utilizing the facility. You know, I look at this, and I, I see two issues. I see public safety, and I see freedom of speech. And what was done back in 2011, I think, addressed in part both of those issues, but has proven over the past eight years essentially to not fully address the issue of safety. And we have had instances, and we had a lot of complaints last fall with people actually being in traffic, in between vehicles, handing out materials, or even yelling across the parking lot, waving arms. Disruptive, distracting behavior, which is, it's, it's bad enough that we've got people running back and forth, attendants running back and forth, and cars going mostly forward. Some, some still go backwards, which is not allowed, but it's a hard enough situation to navigate safely that we want to do everything we can to improve that environment. One reason why we're doing the, the attendant booth and trying to get our staff more forward-facing. But this issue, especially with the potential for more and more referendums at the state level, people coming in to get petitions, you've seen more and more of them coming forward at the legislative level, citizen petitions for overturning an action made by the legislature or the governor, or getting something on the ballot to begin with. Legalization of marijuana, ranked choice voting, all those things have come through, through that process. And so, beyond issues at the state level, we also have issues at the local level. And we have, in the past, some folks have wanted to do things like fundraising down there, political activity for local candidates. All of these things can be a distraction from, from safety at the facility. However, most of them are really important. And so, when we tried to discuss some of these issues at the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee level, who is the, you know, the, the first body that we usually address these issues with, the suggestion was made that we should shut it down in the short term until I was able to come up with a policy that built on and perhaps did a little bit more than what had been done in the past. Fortunately, during that time period, we didn't have any requests for non-transfer station-related activity. So, I, I dodged a bullet. I didn't have to make any tough decisions, but I did have time to put together some thoughts and a memo that proposes a new direction for this, and essentially allowing the same activity... And essentially, allowing the same activities, and even being a bit more specific about what activities are allowed. Not that the Girl Scouts want to sell cookies there, but if they did, I believe that a policy like this would allow for activities like that to happen at the transfer station, in addition to the other public speech activities that the town of Reedfield has respected and allowed for as long as we've had that facility, as far as I understand it, to continue to happen. But doing it in a way that, that really does maximize the ability for us to regulate and maintain the, the safety of that facility. So, this proposal puts together some guidelines that give less ambiguity. We have a lot more specific criteria. We limit the number of people that can be there at any one time, and give a process by which somebody who wants to apply can look and know exactly how and what they have to do in order to be onsite and doing something that has nothing to do with the transfer station. And so, this proposal does have those guidelines. It also moves the location to a much safer area beyond the maintenance building, beyond and far away from the active traffic area, to a kind of a quiet corner, a little bit of an Eddy current is the way I kind of think about it, in a stream where if you want to pull off and talk to somebody about, about whether or not there should be a religious exemption for vaccinations, you can do that without stopping traffic, without having somebody approach your vehicle, without, uh, address, you know, adding...
Just safe.
Adding to the safety issue. So, I hope that this meets the expectations of the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee, and I hope the select board would be willing to consider this as an intermediate step. If we can't get a control of, of activities of the station in a way that keeps it safe, I, I would and will recommend that we not allow those activities to happen. I don't want to do that. I think that public speech is important. I think this is a great venue, but we can't, we can't put people at risk. And so, I'm hoping that after some discussion, you will consider this, and let me know what you'd like me to do with it.
The employees would make sure that these people didn't fear away from this area.
Absolutely, and they would have, we could put in striping or marking, again, which we never had before, because it was just, well, stay out of the way. Okay, what does that mean? We can put pavement striping down and mark this area as clear, clearly defined boundaries, and they know they have a short list of behaviors that are not allowed, yelling, arm-waving, anything that would distract a driver, stuff that you wouldn't want to see on the side of the road, or anybody doing in their vehicle. So, I think it does add a lot more specificity in the staff. It's a lot easier to enforce rules that are clear, so, yeah.
I have a couple of questions on this. Number one, assuming that I do pull off into the side Eddy area to speak to whatever person about whatever issue, what I have to do is I still have to go back through the, what I would call busy area of the transfer station, right? But then I would take Route 1, literally and figuratively.
Route 1, yeah.
Then I would take, so basically, just drive by what used to be the stop and shop. Yeah, exactly. And that way, I could just bypass everything and get out.
That's through traffic.
Is that what you're saying?
Exactly.
Route 1 is through traffic.
Route 1 is through traffic. You're not stopping, you're moving right along. So, then what we would want, maybe want to do is, you know, indicate that if that's the case, if you do stop off for this, please use Route 1, you know, to, to go back around. You know what I mean? Just, just as a, just as a safety thing.
Absolutely.
I think it's very, very funny, and if this, if I, even if I, you know, were at the transfer station, I would definitely do things like this, just so I could be, haha, I'm waving my arms, you know what I mean? So, I would get rid of the yelling or arm-waving and just indicate in that list of activities that are prohibited, distracting behavior. I, I think especially in that where, or, or, you know, distracting driving behavior. But, but, you know, yelling or arm-waving, I mean, somebody might come by and be like, sign my petition, you know, and then they, they, they keep driving around, you know? I mean, I didn't do it because I'm a jerky. I just did it because I know him and I want him to do that. So, and I, I just want to make sure that, that I'm clear on this. We're not taking the ability of someone to go to the transfer station away. We're just giving it a designated spot.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Which is what I think was the intent the first time around.
I just want to make sure that that's happening, because it would be easy to think that somehow there's an extra hoop. But didn't you have to, I mean, people have to come and tell you if they're going to go down there anyway, don't they?
They always did anyway.
Yeah.
But again, it was, it was somewhat subjective, and there was no way for us... I think one of the most important things here is that when you, if you're going to be limiting something, you need to be clear about why and how. And so, before, if we had had five people apply and say, well, you know, on this one day, we all want to be here to do our five petitions, I didn't have a really defensible way to say, you, you, not you. And now, with a policy like this, I would. And that's really important for me, and I think it's important for those people that are trying to exercise their freedom of speech.
Well, also, with all due respect, it's also for the freedom of people that I just want to throw my freaking trash away, and I don't want to talk to anybody.
Absolutely. They shouldn't be burdened with, yeah, harassment.
Well, it is a place of business at a public venue.
Yep.
Why can't you just wave and throw your rucksack out?
That's it. That's exactly right. Just, don't wave your arms. Don't wave your arms. No. Uh, but that's, I, you know, I see what you're saying. I, I just, I, I, I'm always, I'm always a little wary of like, you know, when, when, but we're not taking away anything, we're just giving it shape.
We're just making it safe.
I absolutely agree. I know, but sometimes I feel like the safety is kind of that cowl that you hide behind, but really, truly, I've been a part of it. I've been right there where I'm talking to people, and it's like, oh, God, you know, I don't want to get run over, but I think that's a good, good spot to be in. So, what are you looking for from us?
Well, I have something.
I just, I, I, but that's my last question, anyway.
I mean, I'm hoping you can put this to effect.
Would we do a motion where we would authorize this to be...
Yep.
Okay, that's all I want to know. Yes, ma'am.
Based on what took place at the last solid waste, whoa, I didn't mean to make that. Well, now it's tiny. Now I can't read it. Okay. At the last solid waste and recycling committee meeting, and asking for something, for it to be halted until some semblance of safety could be assured for everybody. I mean, that was a three-town unanimous feeling, and not brought forth by me, I might add. I think this addresses all of those issues, and I know that Eric had asked that this go before the solid waste committee as well as the select board. We won't be meeting, we only meet three, four times a year, every three months, and that would not be in time for anything to take place before the election cycle. And I think it would be wonderful to have people be able to be there and be safe. So, I would suggest that I can make a motion to include what you had suggested, and that we go ahead and take a vote on it and see if we can approve it. And then, as Eric said, that it can be altered at any date in future. So, then if the solid waste committee were to come back and say, well, we were really uncomfortable with this, or we wish you really had added that, we could add it afterwards to have an amendment, so.
Yeah, I would definitely, I mean, I, I, I don't have any problem sending this forward and putting this into effect.
And, and you being at the meeting, you know they were requesting something like this.
Oh, absolutely.
Very, very strongly.
Yeah.
And actually, I think I, I, you know, to your point about the cowl of, of safety being the cover for limiting free speech, you know, I, I definitely understand that, and I was, tried to be sensitive to that, and I can tell you for, with certainty that I was probably more concerned with freedom of speech at this point than I was with the safety.
I got you.
As far as the maintaining that. But, but still, they're both competing public interests.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, sir. And you know what I mean. I'm, I'm certainly...
Oh, yeah.
You know, I understand that, that safety is important, but I also sometimes...
Are you going to make a motion that we extend for five minutes?
I second that motion.
All those in favor?
Yeah. So, yes, I see what you're saying. Absolutely. So, I would, unless, oh, yeah, Ralph, go ahead, buddy. I'm sorry.
I do have a question.
Yep.
And so, Miss Sandra?
What?
Third bullet?
Yes, the third bullet.
Oh, my man.
Restricting the applications to single date only. You get into an election cycle, you have, God forbid, multiple candidates. Is there a problem with allowing people to block times across several days or weeks, so that you will know what the individuals who want to use that place are doing, and if they come in, you can say, oh, no, that one's taken? And I would, I would just think that maybe instead of, instead of one at a time, I like the chronological thing, first come, first served, but I, I think in terms of management and, and logistics, it might be better to, to allow people to block times throughout several weeks, depending on what, you know, what their, what their agenda is.
Now, I read that as allowing that. What I read it as not allowing is, I'm going to, when I read that serial request says, I want to, I want to campaign for the month of October.
Okay, I'm looking at a single day.
Yeah, like a repetitive day.
And that's it.
Right.
If, no, if that's the, if the intent is to block out a number of Saturdays over the course of an election cycle, that's fine.
Yeah, and I mean, this does still give a little bit of discretion as to how it's interpreted and applied. And so, if we did have multiple candidates, say we had five, five folks running for select board, and everybody wanted to be there on a Saturday, I'd say, okay, well, the best we can do is to give everybody an hour, and I'm going to try to break this up as evenly as possible. There, there is still some, I think, discretion here.
Well, at that point, you could, you could throw some numbers in a hat. You, you get, you get this out.
We could do a lottery, yeah.
You could do it as a lottery.
There are some, this, this is a start. It's not definitive. I didn't want to get, again, too detailed, but I also wanted to...
Okay, as long as it's not, I've got to do it every time. I can, I can, I can block multiple dates across a cycle, for example.
And provided that you meet all the criteria, on day one, you're not out there violating everything, I would assume, then you would not be coming back on a different date.
Well, yeah, your, your permission is subject to review.
Yeah, well, and if somebody wanted to do something that would say, every Saturday from noon to noon to, to four, and then we had two other people that said, hey, you know, I'm, I'm running for office, too. How do I, how do I get in here? I would have probably reconsidered that original approval and say, well, we have to do something different to, to balance this. The idea here is to find balance and equity, just like with our, what we were talking about, balance and equity, tax, taxing, taxation, yeah.
Great. Sandy, did you want to say something?
Nope, I'm reading it.
Okay.
Okay. You can always say something, Eric. So, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Reedfield transfer station activity policy, including the map with a, an adjustment to...
Waving and yelling?
To make the distracting behavior line read, distracting behavior such as maybe...
Yep.
Instead of specific things or other distracting behavior, just at the discretion of the town manager to rephrase the distracting behavior based on the discussion we had.
I'll just, I'll just cut it to say that, distracting behavior, yeah.
I second that.
That includes juggling, Dennis, just, just so you know.
No juggling?
Any other discussion?
All right, we're getting late, right?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay.